Good evening. It's the Milford Planning Board, Tuesday, May 6. This meeting is being recorded. What's the first minutes of the meeting?
Much to accept the minutes as divided.
I'll second that.
Moved in second. We accept the minutes as sent. Any discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous of five. We got no 81 beef plants, so Josh, you're on right away.
Thank you all. Good evening. Josh Fiallo with MAPC, Metropolitan Planning Council. Good to see the Planning Board and the Ad Hoc Committee as a joint session. Thank you for having me this evening again for our 12th session together. So we're getting close, very close to the end now. It'll be a relatively brief report, but I did want to touch base on the final engagement that we performed throughout the last month and then culminating in some meetings last week. Talk about the final draft of the plan, some of the feedback that we've heard, and then some of the very minimal next steps. So thank you again for the Ad Hoc Committee and the Planning Board for your time. You can see on this timeline that we are, our arrow is very much at the end of the process here, so we are really wrapping up the final items here and hope that you will find them to your liking. So let's just dive into the final engagement review. So the approach to this final engagement was to organize some final discussions with the community, with leadership in the town, with community organizations to give a report out on the planning process, the plan itself, and to discuss potential implementation. We brought together stakeholders in a variety of ways. For those who were very interested, they were able to email, reach out by phone call, which I did receive emails, I did receive phone calls, and through a survey which we put up that was available from mid, actually the beginning of April to the beginning of May. I closed it yesterday. And then on April 30, which was last week, we had three sessions. We had a session where we invited community-based organizations that we had met with last June. We did not have many of them come back to attend with us, but I had one gentleman from Milford Public Schools join me at 9:00 AM and we had a great discussion, the two of us. At 11:00, I hosted a Zoom meeting from the library to meet with municipal leaders, department heads, boards, commissions. I think we had six or eight in that session, so a little better attended. And then also had a lightly attended community session that evening where we had three people, but we went ahead because of the light turnout and recorded the session via Zoom, the presentation that I gave. We'll get that up online so people can view that as well, just as a sort of full documentation of the process. But for each of those presentations, we gave a, I gave a presentation of the results of the plan, kind of summarizing the process, the executive summary, the vision statement, high level of what the plan is about, and then dwelled on the top 20 actions, which were a part of the implementation chapter. So I went through those items. I think in each of those sessions, did, in spite of the light turnout, had good conversations and did receive good feedback, which I'll share with you some of the themes from that in a moment. This is about the public comment period. In addition to those items which I mentioned, we did receive also, I think it was about six responses on the survey which was available, and I've received emails and phone calls as well. So all of that's compiled in a document which I sent to Larry this morning, I believe it was, so it might not have made it to you all, but I trust that he will forward that along, which you can take a look at the responses in detail. To summarize, we heard a few consistent things in those conversations and in the feedback. And I think these are items which would be useful for us to discuss this evening, just to see if you would like us to adjust the planned contents a little bit. The first was, most, many of the comments were still focused on, I would say overall, what we heard resonated with what we've heard throughout the process. So there weren't really any new surprises. It was very reassuring to hear consistent themes in these conversations at the end of the process, which are very consistent with what we're hearing at the beginning of the process, in the middle of the process. But we did hear a fair amount around traffic congestion still and traffic congestion solutions. In the planned document today, we have both an acknowledgement of two previous efforts, the consideration of a downtown bypass and the consideration of the extension of the Franklin commuter rail line to Milford. We mentioned both of them more in a historic context, that they have been considered, but we do not, they're not among the recommendations for reconsideration or bringing them back. We heard voices in this final round of feedback that they would like us to have them more in the recommendation realm than in the past sort of recounting of events realm. Just put that out there for feedback.
It's not worth the aggravation, to be totally honest. I mean, if we're going to study that, then we go way more money than we need, because I could tell you right now, the MBTA doesn't have anywhere close to the money to do that. So, and it's so far out of our control that, you know, I think it's, it's a wasted effort. And to be totally honest, and this is another thing that people, you know, a lot of people don't think of, ramifications of that based on the state, and again, state doing everybody's zoning for it, that would then put us into the realm of having to meet the MBTA neighbors' requirements, which I don't think we want to go down that path, to be totally honest. So there's many inputs to that that just, to me, I wouldn't want to see that at all. That isn't something that I would want to see on there.
The biggest problem with that is the rail line would have to end at Depot Street, and you've got three, not even secondary streets, the third-rated streets that you're going to dump if they think traffic's bad now.
Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah, it's impractical.
(inaudible)
The bypass road, that had to do back then. Now the bypass road is a joke.
That's gone.
Right, because the, pardon me for not being sure of this, but the bypass road is basically the rail trail, right, or a piece of it?
Well, the rail trail, it could fit.
The thing is, again, with the bypass road, you're going to dump in on the same streets.
Right, the Depot Street area, yeah.
So you're going to Depot Street, North Bow and South Bow, Jefferson.
What are you going to do there?
In trouble.
Okay.
Yeah, that, yeah.
So it sounds like we will continue the approach which we have in the plan, which is, I mean, they're acknowledged in the plan as items that have been explored, but they're not strong, there's no recommendation really about.
No, as long as we explore them, you know, to satisfy your concerns, yeah.
Other items which I think are more squarely in the recommendations of the plan, which were also discussed as traffic congestion solutions, are advocating for and exploring changes to MWR TA bus routes, which I think is, you know, more flexible and more of a potential. So that is one of the recommendations, that that's a potential area to explore. And then the addition of bike lanes is also in the plan as written. So those are more in the recommendations realm and less in the historic review realm and are consistent with comments we heard in this final round of conversation. The others, which I thought were consistent with what's in the recommendations, but maybe, I mean, if we wanted to emphasize them based on what we heard in these final conversations, I'd be open to that. One was looking at continuing to sort of fortify the town's tax base, and one of the ways to do that being to encourage industrial land uses and thinking about ways to, you know, how to do that and exploring that through zoning or other means. That being relative to commercial tendencies right now, a more sort of robust segment of the real estate market, and so potentially industrial uses could be a viable approach to sort of longevity of tax rates and returns. So don't know if you want us to push further on that or kind of leave. It's, I think, acknowledged in the recommendations, but not necessarily highlighted as a feature is how I would say it. It's in there, but not one of the top 20.
For industrial uses?
Yeah, for industrial.
Top one, but there's, I mean, there's no land left.
Well, I mean, you could, if you're looking at it in terms of changing things, you could, but, I mean, I've been on the board for over 20 years, and there hasn't been a huge amount of industrial stuff that's come before us. So it's like, okay, and there is areas, and there were more areas when I first started that were zoned industrial. It just doesn't seem like an area that you're going to, you're going to put in a lot of work to try to get somebody here, and I don't know what you're going to have to give up to get them here, to be totally honest. So I, yeah, I understand the, I understand saying that, and yes, it would help, but I don't know that that client is out there that wants to, that wants to do it, to be honest.
Okay. And then the other theme worth highlighting, which resonated, which we've heard throughout the process, but it showed up again in the conversations, was improving outward communication for the Town Hall and desire for that transparency and enhancement of people's ability to feel like they understand what's happening in the town. So, and I think that is squarely within the recommendations of a variety of goals, strategies, and actions. So I feel like that is accommodated. There are, I maybe can just flash up on the screen if I can work my technology here. Let me just see. This document? Nope. Man. That didn't work, I'm sorry.
That's all right, we wouldn't be able to do it either, so.
Yeah. I'm wondering who among us could help, yeah.
I'm trying to pull up the more detailed comment document. Let me just see if I can do it this way. All right. So just to give you a flavor for beyond those highlighted summaries, this is the document I sent to.
It is in their package.
We have it.
Great, okay. So this is the, this is all the comments that were received through all of those various channels and means. So you're welcome to look at that in more detail. We do have a few, within the prioritization that has occurred in the final chapter of the draft plan, there were some votes for sort of a meta-prioritization of those priorities, which we appreciate. So that shows up in the comments. We had one resident, who I'm not sure would want to be named, but that shows up on the top of the second page, that did actually a fair amount of really great work in terms of really like copy editing, who went through a lot of the chapters very, very, in a detailed-oriented manner and gave us really thoughtful suggestions on sentence structure in some places and grammar corrections. So we appreciate that, and we have made those changes. They did not affect the content, but they definitely affect the ability of the document to be clear. So we have integrated those, which is excellent. Some of the others are basically highlighting the items which I just went through in detail or on the slides. And I think a lot of the others point to information which is in the plan already and squarely accommodated and reflects the conversation that we had throughout the process. So, yeah, I don't know that there's, in some of the other, there were some, from a town, member of the town staff, there were some corrections about town meeting member numbers and number of staff in the town, so we've made those corrections as well that were noted. So just some minor factual corrections that have been integrated. The others, we've, the main themes we just talked through in terms of things that might change the content of the plan. But you're welcome to look through these very specific comments from the, in the various ways that they came into us. All right, so let me shift back to the presentation real quick. Making this work now, all right. So a few other things that we heard too, and I think this is, we'll touch on some in this meeting and the next meeting where we would recommend, I think we're on track for recommending that you're moving towards adoption in your next meeting. I don't see anything too inconsistent with how the process has unfolded. One of the items is that organizing for implementation is critical, and a lot of feedback that people don't want to see this plan just be a planned document that sees its conclusion with this process, but then doesn't have the ability to affect change and affect implementation. So one of the things that I can bring up, and maybe I'll wait until I pull up the planned document in a moment, but I did want to touch on the final chapter, which you all, I think have, hopefully have received, the chapter 14, which is the Implementation Action Plan. Great. So that one is, I think, helps to focus on implementation as a critical next step and gives ways to do that. And then the, one of the other comments and suggestions we heard, which we also think is in the recommendations, is just continuing to build collaboration between boards, committees, commissions, and encourage that cross-collaboration to work towards joint goals in the town.
Just for my own, it says de-silo of boards. What is that leading to? I mean, I don't understand what that, what that's asking or telling.
That was language from.
I was thinking the same thing, Joe.
Yeah, I can explain that. So that was language that was used by a community member in one of the meetings, and he was talking about how each board or commission or committee has their sort of charge and their content area, and sometimes in some cases, staff that support them, and they don't tend to look at what other topics another board or committee might be dealing with that could potentially relate to some of those topics. And they tend to like, I guess, stay in, stay in your lane and kind of do the work of your board, but not necessarily talk about other related boards, like planning, a good, I think a reasonable example is Planning Board and Conservation Commission, not saying that you do or don't talk to each other, but that might be an area where cross-collaboration could occur.
Okay, just to understand that.
I think the question would be, especially as we go into that chapter 14 you just referenced, like, how do other towns do that? Because it's hard in a town structure with, you're largely run by town members and all these various committees that are functionally organized. Anything you can provide, whether it's now or along the way, about how people do a good job with that would be really interesting, because we know the model we have. And I take your point completely, but I just think like, I don't know how we would do it.
I think we do talk, I forget exactly where it is in the, in the document, I'd have to do a word search on it, but we talk about the, one of the mechanisms to do that is just to hold regular joint meetings, you, like, as the, so the Ad Hoc Committee and the Planning Board have been doing joint meetings throughout this process, not on a monthly basis, that's what we're saying, but maybe like once or twice a year to actually have a set meeting for commissions or boards that might have overlapping topic areas to actually just come together and talk about what issues are you facing, what challenges are you seeing in the community, and have more of an open forum about proactively thinking about the challenges that face the town. So that's, that's one of the mechanisms that could be used.
Do you see other towns face that or address that through the lens of solving maybe specific problems? Like, I've heard people say and work on this topic, but if you were trying to start a small business downtown, there's a lot of different departments and groups that you might need to go navigate and not know how to play its path. And that's, that's a very, that wouldn't be solved by committees and departments talking to each other, that'd be solved by organizing around a work stream. Is that, because as you just talked about it, I thought about that, and I know people are trying to address that problem, but is that, is that, I think it competes with the resources for doing what you're, you're talking about. So I'm trying to like noodle that through, right? Because, you know, it's very difficult to do both, right?
Yeah, I think it's true. I think what you've described is another good approach where things like, specific to small businesses is tough, because we've seen towns which have got a lot of mileage out of things like a Small Business Resource Guide, where it actually helps a small business navigate the variety of boards and permitting processes and the like that they have to go through. And that would probably be better served by almost like a task force of all those groups coming together to put that resource guide together, as opposed to it being solved by like a joint session in a meeting. I feel like that would be a more targeted, probably staff-based approach. That's helpful.
It's, but that's something in every town and city, when you go in, if I go in for a building permit, the building commissioner will tell you, you have to get this, you have to get that, you have to get that, got to go to the Board of Assessors.
And you think that happens here?
Yes.
Yeah, I can tell you right now, certainly for the Board of Health, someone who wants to apply for a food service permit, open up a sandwich shop or a full-scale restaurant or something, they come to the Board of Health, and on our application, it would say, did you check with zoning, did you check with building, plumbing, electrician, you know, to make sure all the proper permits are in order? And that's done, over the years of experience that we know, when people ask questions, we answer them, you know, to make sure now it was on the application, now they actually see it themselves. And as they put their application in to get reviewed by the Board of Health, we ask them, did you check all these things off, did you know any other questions you have regarding this?
Yeah.
So that's done as well. As a matter of fact, as the Select Board, I remember when Tom asked, what are we doing? We had the Board of Health produce a document of everything you would need to do to open up a business in the town of Milford.
So I just, one of the things that I see happening is that, like, we do the same thing, planning and.
Mm-hmm, I know you do, yeah.
You know, you, what kind of business, ask questions, try to figure it out, and send them to other departments as needed. But there's, but it's still very segmented. So, you know, I don't know what happens in the Board of Health. I don't know what happens in the Building Department. I don't know what happened, like, so I send people to where I think they need to go.
Yeah, we think they should be, yeah.
But I, but there's no, you know, they may hear one thing, I mean, just Larry and I, for example, if they meet with me and they meet with Larry, they're likely to hear slightly different things. And so when they're going to other departments, I think that's, that's the same thing. They're not, they're possibly getting conflicting information, and even if it's not conflicting, it's still segregated. And I think people that don't understand the process need something to bring it all together for them.
Yeah, and even if you had, even if you could normalize the feedback that you got, and you made it perfectly consistent, the mental image that we just had was somebody going from department to department, department to department, and trying to figure out what they need to do in each of those. And that's, that is what that comment's about. That's, that's a siloed experience for that person. And we used one example, and maybe I picked the wrong one, and it's been solved, but there's certainly other things that people go through, trying to navigate, and I think that's what that feedback's all about, is even if you could really normalize the feedback that you got along the way, you still have to navigate seven different processes or five different processes, whatever that is. And I can see why that's, that's hard, especially when, you know, you have functional expertise, you know, in Town Hall. You know, you're organized around functional competency and functional expertise, as opposed to a generalist that could handle plumbing and electrical and fire and health, and like, that's difficult for one person to handle all that, right?
Yeah, there's a different level, to be, to be honest with, with all of them to a certain, I mean, I think the legal, the legal steps should be something that we can put out and make sure everybody is aware of. The fact of the matter is, as you get into it, there can't be, and I know there has been, expectation that they walk in and talk to you or talk to Larry and have a final decision. That isn't where any of those are, and people can't, you know, and people can't do that. So people have complained about that type of thing, and that's not something that we can, that we can deal with. But whether you have to go to, you know, the outline that you have for the Board of Health or whatever, and I know Planning and Engineering do the same thing of saying, this is what you've got to do, this is the things you've got to follow. What that outcome is, or the expectation that you're going to be able to go and talk to any of these people and get a final answer, that, that can't be, but the process should be able to be stepped, to be put out. And if it's not, then that's something that we should address as we move forward.
But for common victory license, I know when you're going to vote to get it, you go through a list of all the departments.
Sure.
And I'm sure, Rick, you must, you must give that list out.
He does, every time.
And they do, so.
The Board of Select.
So the people should know, I mean, it's.
And it's part of the process of being approved.
Still segmented, so when, so, and I do this when I can. If somebody comes over to Planning and Engineering and they're talking about putting a business or whatever, and there comes to be something that I think they need to go see the Building Department, if I can, I'll walk over with them to the Building Department, and that way I can help, you know, I can take what they've already told me and help facilitate the conversation. That, you know, I don't do it all the time, and it, and I can't say that it happens across the board with all the departments either. So I think it's, it's, it's less about making sure you hit all of the points, it's more about feeling like Town Hall is one place and not seven departments working separately. That's a good way to put it.
Yeah, I guess, from what I'm, what I'm hearing, right, is that this should be part of the plan, right? That there is a lot of questions going on, so by making it, addressing it as a talking point as part of the plan, then it puts the ownership on us of the town to kind of create a way of de-silos-ing and, and working together. So from your side, right, you put it on as a point of interest, and it becomes our topic to solve.
Yeah, we'll see how we can get with it.
And I feel like these kind of discussions are actually part of the solution. It's just like talking through what.
Find out, yeah.
Acknowledge the shortcomings. Do we have, and this would not be a solution by any means, because it doesn't unsilo the processes, but is there any kind of permitting guide in town, you know, that you can hand to an applicant for any kind of permit, so they know where else they might need to go? Just not commonly known as.
Depends what they want to do, like for the Board of Health, we have one.
Right, but I'm talking about like across the board. Some departments have been very resistant to such documents. Are you talking about your phone? No, I'm not talking about. I wouldn't have thought so. I'm just joking. I'm not talking about my own. I've been very open to that idea. It might be, again, it doesn't de-silo, but at least it kind of unmystifies the processes. So maybe we could think about that.
I mean, online, we have, if you're looking for a, excuse me, a certain permit, you will be able to see where you go. Select Board issues these permits. Board of Health issues these permits.
If you know which permit you're looking for.
Right, because there's a variety of permits.
But if you're starting a business and you don't know what permits, you don't know to look under the Select Board and under the Planning Board and under the Zoning Board. Yeah.
And you got to understand, it's not a one-stop-shop either, because there's, like Ricky said, and he said, it's different permits, and they require different types of actions.
Yeah.
You know, and not everything is the same. I mean, if I want to build a house, it's totally different than opening a restaurant. You know.
Which is where a permit guide might come in handy.
Right.
But I mean, we have a list that shows if you want an alcohol license, this is where you go.
So.
Yeah, if you're opening a restaurant and you want an alcohol license, you should be able to go, look, here's an alcohol license, go to the Board of Select.
Yeah, so that's a lot of what I'm thinking of.
I think that's, we do have that. To put that impression out there that we don't have that aggravates me a little bit.
Okay, you can see it in your voice.
Giving the position, I'm in.
Yeah.
Are we siloed? Yeah.
Yeah.
Elected.
Indecible, yeah.
Elected.
Right, yeah.
Okay. So we are siloed in that respect. I mean, maybe the discussion, and nobody wants to do the work, is maybe we change the form of government. And, yeah, there's the reaction I get.
You're not doing that either.
You know, for me.
And you're not going to do it all in this building.
Correct, correct. Exactly.
You may have to go to the Sewer Department.
And no matter where you go.
Water Department.
That's right. No matter where you go, you go to the Sewer Department, the Water Department, the Fire Department, it's not in the Town Hall.
Right.
But that doesn't mean that there's not conversations and, and information shared between departments. And I think that is, I, and I don't know what goes on upstairs for the most part, because I don't have to deal with that. But the, the departments that I do deal with, I don't have constant communication with hardly any of them, so.
You do it with the Board of Health.
Yeah, so I'm part, so I'm part of the Board of Health.
You are, that's what I meant.
So, so that's, so, right, so I, and because I, that, that does give me, with the Board of Health, it is different for me with that. But sewer, water, highway, parks, I, these are, I don't meet with them regularly.
Right, right. But that's where you can advise the applicant who's coming in for advice, where to go. It's up to that department to be cordial to them.
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to solve this here, and certainly not solve tonight. But I mean, you know, whether, to me, it comes down, I think the, the difficult thing is that, as Ricky just said, we're, they're a bunch of elected, and there's been for as long as I can remember, going back, and I've been, I've been a citizen of this town for as long as I've lived, and from those points on, every one of the boards has always been, no, that's my board, that's my prerogative, that's the way I'm going to do it. And I don't know that we're going to change that in the next five years, 10 years, 20, I sort of doubt it. But at least a person coming in should have a clear sight as to where they have to go. In terms of the boards working together, that's a very difficult thing, and to say it's going to happen is, is probably very, you know, is probably something that I don't know that you can say any plan is going to, is going to do. But I think that there should be pieces of paper that say, if you're looking to open a business in Milford, these are the people you should go and talk to, and we should keep it updated, so that it has the appropriate people that are there.
Well. Well, I'd, I'd like to echo that. I think it'd be a great idea to have, even if it's just a visual flow chart for each type of permitting process or whatever it is.
for each type of permitting process or whatever it is. I think that's a great idea. And I would welcome an annual or bi-annual meeting of the different boards. I mean, I would attend that. I think that's great, you know? Information, you can, you know, you can learn a lot.
All right, we'll, we'll look through the language in the plan relative to this conversation and just make sure that it fits. But I did want to share, and this is, apologies because it is a little overdue. I was hoping that we would get you, so you've seen all the content of the plan. You've gotten that incrementally over the last month and that's been publicly available now and reviewed and presented. But, and I haven't sent it yet to Larry, the link, but I do have with me on my screen, which I'll share with you, the actual formatted document now, which I'll share, make sure that Larry has a document that he can share with you guys. But let me just pull that up because I do think it, it looks a lot better than the, the files you've been, that have been circulating now. So this is the, all of that content, which you've seen mostly in Word file form. It's the same language, all the same text, et cetera, but in a more formatted document form with all the figures and maps. And I think it, it just reads much better and, you know, pops off the page and you can see a lot of the, the themes and the organization of the plan and actually having some photographs in the document. All of that helps a lot. But you can see the same, the same content that we've been talking through is present, but now you have actual like chapter breaks with the intro to the chapter, things like the, the historical events, which jump out a little bit more with some of the illustrations and historic photographs. The narrative sections have some images that go along with them. We've integrated the thematic maps that we've had throughout the process, where they fit. Present day features of the town, we've got the demographic analysis. Now we've actually got some of the charts that are a little more interesting than the language. Context for each of the various topic areas. I'm just going quickly, but you can see the, the feel of it. And the content is a lot, a lot more rich and, and I think engaging than it was previously. And I'll get down to one of the thematic chapters. Here's the Milford's Future chapter with the language around the vision statement. And even that feedback from the community is dressed up a little bit. The vision statement now has its own kind of dressy full spread with some of the themes that came out. The future vision map, which we talked about in a previous meeting. And then the introduction of the themes, which are how we organize the chapters. And then from here, each of the chapters is built around those themes like we've discussed. So this is the same language that you see, but now added with a thematic map in each chapter. And then as you get into the goals, strategies and actions for each of the themes, they're organized in a little more readable way. And this is where we bring back the, the icons which associate to the different topics. So we've, we've shifted to the themes where we still hold the various organization by the topics with those icons. And this continues on down for each of the thematic chapters. And I'll scroll really fast because I want to get to the last chapter, which is the implementation chapter where you can see each of the, I think a really rich document that has a lot of content, for sure, and a lot of, I think, the, the illustrations and the maps helped to make the points that the text was making. Almost there, it's 12th chapter, 13th, and the last one. So this implementation action plan, I did want to touch on. And one of the things to note was that everything I just scrolled through, so those goal, the, the plan is truly comprehensive. So it does touch on across those nine overarching themes, we've, we've tabulated it, so it's 52 goals. And then there's 170 strategies and 323 actions. And that's not intended to be, and we say this in the plan document, it's not intended to be, it's fully accomplishable really by the town. So like this is to give you all, when a topic comes squarely into the radar, hopefully this plan document gives you something to move on. Or like you say, this is a topic, what did the plan have to say about it? And hopefully this will give you some, some framing and some action around that specific topic. We did want to, in this chapter, highlight 20 of the goals, strategies and actions that we do think are important to start, that will get the ball rolling on implementation and that will start to move some of the most critical items and themes that we've heard from the community. So that's what is highlighted here in this chapter. And the other thing I wanted to highlight too is the notion of forming a comprehensive plan implementation committee. And that's been one of the, I think, most effective ways to make sure that it's not just a document that sits on the shelf, but is actually a document that has action around it. And that, those committees can be appointed or created in a number of ways. It could be a subcommittee of the planning board, it could be its own independent thing, it could be appointed by the select board and planning board jointly. Could be some communities that I've even created them through town meeting. So there's a variety of ways that you can create that implementation committee. But the, I think the important take-home message is that to have a body that's responsible for looking out for making progress on some of these ideas is important. Because as, as the conversation we just had about the divisions between where responsibilities lie, the, the document really does cross a lot of those boundaries. And so it's, even though it's a planning board document in the end, I think it's, it's a little bit more expansive and comprehensive than the planning board's charge alone. And that's what an implementation committee is helpful to help move on. So that's all in here in this chapter. And then the, the chapter also does, for each of the 20 highlighted goals, strategies and action combinations, we gave a little more combination around a commentary, the type of action that it is, and who we think might be best positioned as a responsible party, either a lead or a partner, partnering responsibility on each action, and the timeframe, whether it's a continuous and sort of ongoing activity, a near-term, midterm or long-term activity. And then where external resources are available, like a grant source or a funding source, we've made reference to those as well. So trying, trying to give a variety of pieces so that there's some, you know, we're providing the breadcrumbs on that trail so that some of that action can get, get moving. So that's the final chapter, the 14th chapter, which is called Implementation Action Plan. We'll highlight that. I will send this document to Larry, which will get to you. And you can see basically, again, just reinforcing that none of the content is new, but it's basically been reformatted and packaged with all the, the visuals that we've had along the process. Thoughts or questions on that?
Just a question, just because I read through the implementation stuff. I, I didn't really have that many comments per se. But the thing that hit me as I was looking through that is, and maybe it's the implementation committee, maybe not, but a lot of these things, and having gone through this before in the previous one, unless as a champion, I don't see a lot of these getting done. So this is a question more a yes or no as opposed to you naming anybody. But as you went through the process, did you see people that were out there that you believe would be champions for some of the things that are in here?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I hope that some of you all are champions of this work. So I think that you, you all have been very solid voices in this process. We, we have seen, I think, what we've seen in the actual community meetings is I, if, if it was the town's desire to have as a composition in that implementation committee, at-large resident representation, we have seen some passionate residents who are eager to get more involved in the town. And so I feel like if you, if you had a few spots which were open, an open call to residents that they could apply and then you can review those applications and see if they can fill those spots, I do think you would get response to that if such a call were made and that they might also be, help to have, bring energy into that implementation.
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, there, there certainly may be people on the planning board that, that would be. But I, you know, from where we were before, I think you, at least I feel, we did the things that were within the planning board's jurisdiction from the last plan. Those are the ones that got moved forward. A lot of the other things went by the wayside. And, and I don't want the same thing to happen necessarily again this time. So that's, that's why I asked the question, so that's why.
Yeah, and I do think some of the, there are definitely items in the top 10 that are, have a focus on zoning and that are in the planning board's wheelhouse. So I do think there are items which are certainly, that fall in the same category of items you implemented from the previous one. Other thoughts or questions about the full formatted document, which we'll get to you all shortly? All right, so the next steps are, are getting to be fewer and fewer. All of this is up and available on the website for people to take a look at. Larry and I had talked about this and we had talked about previously in the last meeting, I think we had together, that this meeting would be a, a review of the items we've gone over. And if there were no major red flags, that we would likely be positioned to move toward a second meeting later this month, which is on May 20th potentially, if you all agree. And that the purpose of that would be basically to, between now and then, to make sure that we're all comfortable, there's no other final changes, but that we could move toward a recommendation from the ad hoc committee to the planning board and then to the planning board ultimately for adoption of the plan. But that's, that's up to you all to feel comfortable with and to make sure that you're okay with. But I, from our perspective, I think we are on track to do so. But it's, it's fine with us too if you want to take more time for one reason or another.
Josh, for the chapter three on the demographics, is, is it possible, I know we've been going on for almost a year, but a lot of the metrics are from 2022. I mean, can those be updated to current?
That, I can check. I think that given the lag time on census data, that those might actually be the current years. So with the, usually what we end up using, the most current data outside of the 10-year census, which is the decennial census, is the American Community Survey, which is a five-year survey. Except that five-year survey, the analysis of, and then the release of the data from the Census Bureau lags by about two or three years. So the ACS 2022, with ACS of, with 2022 being the most recent of the five-year estimate. So the data is actually from 2022 to 20, what's the, how's the math work on that, to 2017? So it'd be 2017 to 2022 would be the five-year estimate range that that data is reflective of. But I'll, I'll check with our data services team because there's, there is a rolling release of that data. But I would say probably at the best it would be 2023 would be the date on this. And, and just as a, another measure of reassurance, the way those data sets work is they drop off 2017 and they add 2023. So the actual shift in data isn't that dramatic from set to set, if you.
One more question in general. So these, these goals that we set up and the action plan, the strategies, what's, what's everybody thought about having an assignment, an assigned person or team to work on them?
Yeah, I.
Spell that out now. That's just my opinion.
I think that would be very helpful and go a long ways towards implementation. I think what we could do, either in session like we are, I'm happy to try to take a shot at it right now if we'd like, but, or offline, you know, through emails and things, what I would suggest is focusing on the final chapter, chapter 14, the 20 items there. And start with trying to assign, we've assigned specific parties? Let me just scroll, let's keep scrolling through this document. Let's go back down to the bottom. For example, like we've got Planning and Engineering Department, Highway Department, Planning Board, Downtown Revitalization Committee, things like that. But if it would be helpful to actually pull out individual names or champions, we'd be happy to add that information in. I feel like that can some, that can be helpful, but for us to do it alone, I, I fear that we would mostly miss the mark.
I don't, personally, I don't think that belongs in the plan. I mean, that, that person could change next April.
Right.
Because we have, we have elected officials and stuff. So I mean, as far as the plan goes, I think you have that. As to how the implementation actually works out, you know, as a start, if, if, if there's gonna be a, a comprehensive plan committee or however that's going to move forward and that hasn't really been determined either, that, that would be important to it. But I, I don't think that belongs in the plan. I, I wouldn't go to that level.
No.
Well, I think the hybrid would be the, the seat, not the individual.
Correct.
So you wouldn't want to put a person's name in a document that's supposed to persist for a decade or so.
I think that's what he's got.
Right, but I.
I can't see that far.
I would say that you need to, I would say you need to have one person listed as a lead. And then that part, that, say it's Planning and Engineering Department is the lead and then they're responsible for coordinating with the other departments. Because I think, I think.
If you named five groups, nobody steps forward.
Yeah, right.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think that's a meaningful change. We could change it to lead responsibility and supportive responsibility and maybe break it into two, like two rows. And then actually have a lead and maybe say that they are responsible for kind of, of course, leading, but also coordinating with the supporting groups.
Leader slash coordinator.
Yeah.
You said person, but you mean position or entity, like what board?
Right, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I can make that change.
I think for some of these, you're gonna, you're gonna find it difficult to do that, but that's fine if you.
Yeah, to an extent it can be done. I think, I, I think just pulling one out and then the planning board can hold that party responsible. Whether they, if the planning board doesn't see it as important, then they.
I'm saying, I'm saying, I'm saying some of them, I think it's gonna be very difficult as to who the responsible party should be. And to make that judgment now before any, any group of people get together, to me, doesn't, just doesn't make sense. I mean, for, for the one that was up there, I think, you know, traffic, planning and engineering needs to be the lead. There, there is no other department in the town that's really, well, I shouldn't say that because police control the signals, but we won't get into that.
I would lose the road.
But anyways, you know, I think some of them are very clear as to which department it should be. But others, I think that may be a little more muddy, muddy. But if you, you know, if you go through it, Josh, and you find out you can, then that's fine. I, I don't have a problem with it.
To be determined category or something like that? If it, if it isn't apparent, if there are a few choices?
I think we can reinforce maybe on each of these pages too. Because I'm imagining that some of these might actually just, like a single page might be kind of what people are starting with as opposed to like the entirety of this plan document. And so we, on this single page, I think we could also maybe add, just add a little bit of a, almost like a narrative disclaimer about, like, the intention is to help get the town started and rolling on this. But people shouldn't feel like, oh, well, the, you know, it's written here that the planning board has to be the lead. But if it's decided that there's other, another better lead, it doesn't have to stick to what's delineated. So we'll maybe come up with a little bit of language just in terms of how this is intended. It's not intended to constrain your options, it's just intended to get the ball rolling. And if you, if there's a better approach to implementation, so be it and you all can move from there. Okay, it's all good feedback? All right, back to this. So I've got it on my calendar and, I mean, you all can discuss, but if you all feel comfortable with it, I think we can continue, I, I think that what we're discussing in terms of some of these changes, we can accomplish for sure in the next, say, week. I'll send the link that we have currently to Larry so that you all can have the full document that's laid out tomorrow if Larry's in. And then, or I guess I can send it to you and Larry.
Yeah, just send us both of us, but I'm, I'm sure he'll be in.
And then in the meantime, while you have that document, we'll continue like breaking the, the responsibilities into a lead and a support role and do some of the minor changes like that. And then get you a second document back in advance of the 20th. And that would be the document that would be ready for adoption effectively.
You think the 20th would be okay or, for time-wise?
Yeah.
For you?
Yeah, I think, I feel comfortable with it. I think we've got, the document I just scrolled through is looking good.
Because that would, the only changes would be in the last chapter anyway, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So if we, we get that and then the, the changes will, they'll be easy for us to go over, yeah, okay. So how do you feel comfortable in your, on your end?
The only question I have is, I, I don't have a problem with the date. The only thing is I'm thinking we need, we should have, we need to have a quorum then. And that's not a regularly scheduled meeting of this committee, it's a regularly scheduled meeting of the planning board, but not of this committee. If we can't get a quorum for that meeting, then we can't really have a vote. So that's the only thing that I, that I throw out there, that maybe it makes more sense to do it in the first meeting in June, which would have been a normal meeting, that we would have done this.
What if it, what if it goes over?
I'm just throwing that out there because I think it could be an issue. I don't know who's going to show up on the 20th.
Yeah, you're right.
What was the, what's the normal meeting date in June? Just to check.
Well, it, so if Rick, it would be Rick, Paul, and Brent. I wanted to say Brent.
That's fine.
The three of you?
The three that aren't the
Four, correct?
Yeah, Jeff Frederick.
That's what I'm saying. There's one that hasn't really been showing up. I don't know whether he plans to or not. If these gentlemen aren't available.
20th, I'm
Yeah, I'll be here.
But that's fine. I don't have a problem with the 20th. I mean, that's my angle.
That's where you were politely trying to go? Would you be here? I think it's what Elizabeth is trying to say very politely.
We wouldn't have, no, I just asked. It goes Wednesday. It goes Wednesday. It'll go wherever.
That was really very kind and tactful.
That's why we book another day, yeah.
Basically what we're trying to find out is if you, will you guys be coming on the 20th?
Yeah, they'll be here.
Okay.
God willing, yes.
See, in my repoly, God willing.
Well, if all the planning, if all the planning board members that are on the committee are here, then we'd be okay. Anyways, if Paul and Rick are going to be here, then we'd be okay. So that's, I don't have an issue with it. I'd do it on the 20th.
Yeah. Your time wise is the way I was worried about Monday.
You said you can, you can comply.
Yeah, no, I feel the document, which I just scrolled through with you, I feel very comfortable with. I've reviewed and re-reviewed, a team has put everything into it, so it's ready, yeah. And we'll make the, the minor change, the changes we discussed this evening are pretty minor and we can integrate them.
And we can, we can move on that night too, right?
Yeah.
For acceptance, yes.
Yeah, the ad hoc and recommended, the planning board can accept it.
Yeah.
What I would, I guess, which you probably, once that happens, we can send it to, we should probably send it to the select boards if they have it. And then, and that would, to me, that would mean the fall town meeting, we could make a presentation to town meeting.
That's great. And I think Larry was talking about wanting to print some copies as well.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, whatever he had for that.
He's already got the dividers.
That's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was still working on trying to navigate our high school sports schedule.
I was wondering what's so complicated about your calendar? I thought it's not your own that you're looking at.
It's my job plus I coach and I work with the high school team with a kid on it. So they go on the same time. Oh, good.
Little forum anyways. I mean, if he comes up, so that would be good.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We'll have a chance next meeting, but it has been a pleasure working with you all.
Yes.
Well, hopefully we'll continue with some other stuff too, Josh, as we've talked about.
Okay, this is for 110 South Main Street for electric vehicle charging stations. Larry's, go ahead, you make your presentation.
For the record, John Federico with Guryer and Helman. So from my understanding, the applicant was in, previously, I believe in March, to propose four electric vehicle charging stations. Those would be RE and existing striped parking spaces. I guess there were some issues that they had with the plan scale and some of the information that they were providing there. So we have prepped up this plan here with a 40 scale and a 10 scale detail that just essentially shows that we're going to be doing a little bit of pavement removal, or sorry, not pavement removal, sidewalk removal to accommodate for the bollards and the electric vehicle charging station. We still will be providing a full five-foot sidewalk for ADA accessibility out within the right of way, but that was something that we would have to accommodate for. And then after reviewing Milford's zoning codes, we are allowed to go no more than 24 inches within a parking stall for some type of structure. So we did make sure that the design was compliant with that regulation there. So we do believe that this should be a relatively simple change for things, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions from the board.
Well, one of the big things was the transformer was in the, was in the right of way.
It was in the easement.
Easement, okay.
But it's been
It's been removed.
Yep.
Any comments from the board?
Quickly, you may or may not know, tier one or tier two charging stations?
Ah.
Or tier three? Just, I just learned this the other night at the school committee.
Show off.
I know. And that's why I said you may or may not know. I'm assuming it's going to be tier two.
It says it's a
Right? It looks like tier twos. It doesn't, to me, it's not a deal breaker one way or the other. I just wanted to ask the question to see, you know.
What's the difference? I'd like you to explain that, please.
All right, so your tier three are like your Tesla charging station, so one like a supercharging station. Tier two is a single phase, 240 volt, 40, 50 amp. And then tier one
Wow, can you dumb it down for me? Yeah, same here.
And then tier one is your
The amount of power that's going through.
Tier one is your, an extension cord.
How far, yeah.
Right? So
And then how fast.
How fast, right? So obviously the extension cord one is going to take a much longer time. A tier two is kind of like, again, what you're, if you were to have a
The ones that you have at home.
Yeah, like at home. And then the tier three are truly like the Tesla charging stations that you can plug your car in and it's going to charge within 15 minutes.
They have at the gas stations.
And it's proprietary.
It's going to be a tier two because
Those are mostly
Those are the ones that credit card can go through.
Correct, exactly. They all, yeah. So just again, out of curiosity, I assumed, yeah, it was tier two and not a tier three Tesla charging station.
I would agree with that. I can definitely say it's definitely not just like an extension cable or anything.
Why, exactly.
That was a transformer, right?
Yeah.
Thank you, Chris. That was very informative.
Hopefully it was. I don't know. It was quick.
The only, is the sidewalk work in, in the right of way? Do they have to work in the sidewalk or they need to, and then it's being fixed? Is that what's going on or?
So it is actually within our property line. And you can see
How the sidewalks in the property line?
The property line and that overlaps a little bit with that sidewalk there.
And then the other question I'd have is, power going into the distribution cabinet and transformer those, because those will be new. I'm assuming they're grabbing off the pole and going
Yeah, it's the pole that's right there.
Going underground, the pole's right there.
That's why
So very minimal trenching and all that.
That's why they're going through the sidewalk.
That's why they moved it to this side because
Yep. Okay. So yeah, then I like to have to open up Depot Street for
Pleasure of the board.
Make a motion, we approve the amended site plan? Amended? I think it is.
Moved in second, we approve this amended site plan? Any further discussion or none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous or five?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Larry, did it indicate if you guys need an extra copy of the plan at all? Do folks need one?
You're going to bring
You're going to have to bring the Mylar in for Larry to sign anyways.
All right, no problem. We'll definitely make sure we get that over to you guys.
We don't do, we don't do Mylars anymore.
Oh, we don't?
Just papers.
Okay.
Okay.
Everything gets scanned, so it doesn't need to be Mylar.
All right, cool. I'll definitely let everybody know. All right, thank you all so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jeez, we're moving into the 20th century, not the 21st?
Anything else before the plan, the board? Or none?